Begin with Pledge of Allegiance. And the Pledge of Allegiance is used by the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Please silence your cell phones. Are there any additions or violations to the meeting?
Uh, man, I'm sure there are not.
All right, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Visitor's comments, thank you all you chairs for coming. Consider the consent agenda. Consider the meetings of the previous monthly board meeting. The special board meeting on November 20th. Consider the monthly cash flow, including investments, monthly bills paid, monthly bills paid in activities accounts, donations, which I didn't see any, there weren't any this month, please.
I didn't see none.
I didn't see any.
No, there were not. Um, one came in this morning from the bookstore, so that'll go on next month.
Okay.
Didn't get it on.
Yep.
They just dropped it off today.
Yep. And the personnel summary sheet, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that. I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Special Board reports with possible action. Uh, Budget Committee meeting held on December 11th. Which, oh, budget. We're looking at budget.
We're looking at the budget.
Yep. I regret that as one standard budget committee meeting. Sorry.
We didn't meet today, so uh, we'll start with uh, Business Manager Report. So a lot of these things will kind of just kind of fall under her for all the things today. So we'll just, I'll turn it over to Missy, our Business Manager, and let her start with the um, levy.
Okay. We're gonna start with the Truth and Taxation Hearing. So. So, we're gonna go over the 2023, 2024 Budget and the Proposed 24 Property Taxes for Pillage of Public Schools. Okay, so factors affecting the taxes, so this is just gonna go over the taxes over in the big picture. Um, your property classification and value, school district factors affecting the pay 24 and how it all comes together. So this is gonna be how they affect the property owners, which is going to be addressed in the presentation. Okay, so big picture. So why have a truth and taxation meeting? So if the law was passed back in 1989, there's two major requirements, tax statements and a public hearing. So this is going to be the school district's annual required hearing. Who sets the levy? So the components of the district levy are set by a formula by legislature and also a voter approved as authorized by the state. So the property tax is determined by the county assessor. It determines the market value for each parcel of property. The Minnesota Legislature sets formulas for the tax capacity. And then the county auditor calculates the tax capacity for each parcel. And the county auditor divides the total levy by the total tax capacity of the district to determine the tax rate needed. Now, there are certain levies that are spread based on market value rather than tax capacity. So like a net tax capacity affects all parcels in the property in the district. Commercial, industrial has a higher tax burden than homestead properties. And then the referendum market value, not all properties pay on that. So the properties are valued the same, will pay the same rates. Agriculture properties also are not included, agriculture and seasonal rec. So the county collects the money and distributes it to the schools. All right, so this is, this slide is showing you how the general education formula allowance has been increasing, but it's not keeping up with the inflation. Um, so remember, starting in '26, there's going to be an automatic inflationary increase of about 2% to 3% on the basic formula allowance. That's what was passed on legislation this past year. It's supposed to help keep the school districts up with inflation as long as it's between the 2% and 3%. Okay, so property tax levies, school versus non-school. So this is just showing you um, on the diagram how the schools are compared to other non-school local governments, so your cities, your counties. So the cities and counties are in the red, you can see how they've been trending upwards quite well. And the blue is kind of been a little staggering and we're slowly trending, but it's at a less lower pace than the local governments. All right, so next we're gonna dive into the 2324 Budget. So from the first revision that was approved this fall, the revenues and expenses, we approved about 17 million in revenues and about 16.8 in expenses, leaving us with a net of about 198,000. That's just in the general fund. And then you can see the food service and the community ed, general debt, and then with the total at the bottom, just totaling about a net of 616 with all funds inflated. So the next one, we're gonna, this is just a pie chart of the revenues, just showing you how it's kind of split out by the state aids is the red, the local levy is the blue, and then federal aids is the green. So about 1% is federal, local levy about 14%, and state aids is 85%. So the levies are only one part of our overall revenue. All right, property classifications and value. So. This is a sample of what your year valuation sheet will look like. So in step one, that happened last spring. So what's happening right now is step two, and then step three will happen next spring. So any of the tax payers are invited to come to any meetings if they want to have their taxes changed in the year. Um, so in this slide, it's gonna show the process of how that works. Um, to change the valuation, you do need to do it in the spring of the year when the valuation notice comes out. Most local and county appeals take place in April, May, and June. Updated by October is the property tax statement that comes from the county treasurer's office. So effective, this is just a breakdown of the effective tax rates by category, by farm, seasonal rec, residential apartment, public utility, commercial, industrial. Uh, so. So in general, the farmers do get a break in relative, relativity to the value of their property. And even at a lower rate, it increases the value, it translates to higher property taxes. Uh, you multiply the market value of the property by its effective tax rate, and then you get an estimate of the net taxes paid on the property. This is just a breakdown of the share of the tax liability amongst the categories. There's some dramatic differences in between like farms and seasonal rec versus commercial, and then residential and other residential. There is an aid to school tax credit, so that was allowed, that was enacted back in 2017. It affects all of the fund seven debt levies except the old head bonds. Um, there are reductions for farmers and timber owners, it will remain at 70% in 2024. The revenue from aid to school comes from the state, state income, sales, and other tax revenue. And then the next slide is just gonna show us how that percentage is set to. So as of right now, it was increasing from '21 to '22, so '22 was 60%, this last year was 70, and now this next year will be 70 as well. All right, so if the aid to school credit is on your property tax statement, it's going to be in this area on that step two.
Can you leave that?
There are some tools out that are provided by the MREA organization, and they can be found at this website, if you look at the maps. But it gives you kind of a, the gist of what we, how we compare to all the other districts in the state. So if you could see, there's a little arrow here, so we're this kind of darkish yellow area right here. So it's showing us here that we're below median. So you can kind of see the light yellow is the smallest, the dark yellow is the below, and then that orange color is above, and then the dark red is the largest quartile. So we're still considered below median. All right, so in our LOR and operating referendums, this is where the property value increases because of inflation have been hurting the districts. So as the property values are increasing, the districts aren't seeing as much state aid. And as you can see, we don't take any of the the extra that we could be taking. All right, so school factors that affect the 2024 pay. So some possible reasons for changes to your parcel. So it could change, the value could change on your property classification, change in enrollment numbers, change in valuation of your property in the district, local decisions and requirements, adjustment for prior years, or legislative changes. And then referendum big picture. So this data does not reflect the referendums that passed this November, which we didn't have one, so we're not affected by that. But this is showing the median based on all districts, including the ones with no operating referendum. So if we only looked at the districts who passed operating referendums, the median would be about 739 per pupil. But as you can see, we don't take an operating referendum, so. All right, long-term facility maintenance. So this is also included in our school property taxes for pay 2024. Every July, we have to submit a tenure plan to MDE. And on that tenure plan for this last year was the athletic complex, which was approved by the board, and then just normal up to the maintenance. So what's anticipated for LTFM revenue is about 412,000 in revenue. The state aid share is about 70,000 with the local share being 342,000. And that's also gonna be reflected on your property tax numbers under other levies. Okay, so if we put it all together, so your proposed pay 24 levy, you have about 2 million in the general fund, 111,000 in community ed, the general debt service is about 1.5 million, for a total of 3,727,000, which is about a 6.84% change. This is the same that was proposed back in September, the amounts did not change over the last year. Okay, so if there's any more information that you would like, you are more than welcome to contact the State of Minnesota for Property Tax Relief, or you can call the county assessor for which county you reside in, whether that be Casco County or Morrison County. Um, if there's any questions related to the levies that I can help with, my information is there. Any questions?
Do you have any phone calls, I think?
I have not received any phone calls. Thank you for attending the budget and the proposed property tax hearing.
Yep, I'll make it. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the 6.84% on the property taxes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else in budget?
What about the business?
The audit, we got the audit next.
It is really nice to have this done in November, the audit. It may be so much, but it's small today, this month.
I can get back that lady's supercrack. Message you, like.
So cheerful.
I messaged, I did message her back.
I only have like 30,000 emails. I have a horrible problem with opening it.
You have a copy of.
I think I read it, but I don't.
You have a copy on your desk of the audit.
Oh, she's got it, just the first few pages. She must be just looking for her notes.
I'm just grabbing my copies, I have notes online. All right. So, you all have a copy of the FY '22, '23 Budget Audit. Okay, so overall, it was a, we got an unmodified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion, which is what we want. They reported that the audit went smoothly, there was a positive working relationship, nothing unusual was noted. There was significant estimates for net pension liability, net open liability announced from corporate. And then one of the changes for the last year was they adopted a new accounting standard from GASB 96 with subscriptions. So any IT subscriptions last, last more than one year, and we have to report that now. So we had three that were more than one year, but they were listed as immature deals, so they didn't have to report anything. Okay, so internal controls over our financial reporting. So these are the same things that we have every year. Um, so audit adjustment, there were various adjustments that were reported during the process. The segregation of duties, which is very common for a district our size, and then financial standard preparation, which is also common for a district our size. Uh, Minnesota legal compliance, they're required to, by law, to look at our compliance. And there was one finding with quoting and bidding requirements. So there were, there were two bids for two purchases, one was an oven, and one was stated in signage where not more than two holes were, not more than one hole was received. So that did result in a finding. Okay, based on the amount of federal funds that our district receives, we do have to go through a regular audit, but we also go through a single audit. And they choose two items that they do during the single audit. So this year, they were testing the child nutrition cluster and then the education stabilization fund, which is some of the SRR funding. Um, we also received a unmodified clean opinion on the schedule of expenditures of federal funds. There were no compliance findings. There was a internal control over compliance with, in regard to a couple of applications where the applications were turned in in the beginning of the year, but there was a status change in the middle of the year at some point, and the documentation was not found for those status changes. So that was an internal control finding. Um, they also had to list the food service commodities. So I have been working diligently with our food service contractor to figure out why our commodities. So every year, we're allowed to get a certain amount of money back for commodities. We did not receive that full amount through Auvions this last year, so I've been working with them to figure out why we haven't gotten it back. And so that, that is going to be credited back coming in the next couple of months.
Was there a reason that came up on why we didn't?
There was a change within Cisco. So, and even our auditor said that they've seen this same thing with a number of other districts. So Auvions has also been working with Cisco to to work through that, yep. Okay, so the next slide is just showing you the, with our student, our kiddos are trending, just what's happening there. So you can see, of course, like most districts, we dipped in 2021, but we've been improving since then. And then your next slide is going over the trend analysis on the budgetary comparison. So what we really want to look at on this page is kind of down in that dark gray area. So as you can see, you've got a box for 2022 and 2023. So the very right is what was budgeted, the middle is what our final numbers were, okay? So revenues came in at about 16.7, and we'll dive a little bit deeper into this in the next few pages. Expenditures came in at 17.7, and then other resources, the 733,0621. So the other resources, that is a, we, the 2020 referendum project is now closed. So last year, we had a transfer of that, we had a balance of that 733,0621. Well, that got transferred from the construction account into our general fund because it's, we're zeroing that out, it's done. We're, we're closing that out, so that actually helped us. So as you can see, my 2023 budget on the very right, I, we were predicting last spring to be in the hole about 1.4 million, and that was due to the athletic complex, right? So the 2023 actual numbers, we were only 200,000 in the hole. A large part of that was because of that construction transfer in that 700,000. So if you take that out of the mix, we were about a net 1 million in the hole. So we were still under what I was predicting, which is good, that's good for us.
But that was our plan also, to write a great budget, to do the work.
Correct.
Correct.
Anybody listening, know.
Yeah, that was our plan, so we actually came out better than what we anticipated.
Yes.
By about 400,000 dollars.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so if we kind of work through these next few slides, and we'll go into a little bit more detail, the detailed revenue analysis, so in the state resources, you can kind of see the red is what the actuals. So that was up about 472,000, so the 400,000 was special ed, which special ed, of course, is one that we can't, is really hard to bank on how much you're getting. And then the other portion was 72,000 in LTFM. Um, if you look at the other local and county revenues, the red is up a little bit according to what was budgeted, and that was mostly due to some MA third-party billing that we started doing, and the E-rate funding that we got back. Okay, so then we can go and look at expenditures. The, the red, of course, is the final numbers, and then the green was the final budget. So we were, we did underestimate a little bit in regular instruction, so we'll have to dive into that a little bit more. And then exceptional instruction, that was that was about the same thing, we had about 249,000 more in expense. But with special ed instruction, we do get about 40% of that back. And then if you look at the sites and buildings and then the capital outlay, you have to kind of look at those two together. So those two kind of offset each other, that one was about, that was down about 290,000 according to budget, if you net them, combine them together. Now, the next one, you're gonna see our cash investment trend analysis, of course, because we've been kind of spending with projects, our cash analysis over the last couple of years has gone down. And then the next slide, you're gonna see the fund balance classification. So this is just showing you what is in a non-spendable, what's restricted, what's assigned, and what's unassigned. And how that's broke out. The next one is the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the annual budget. So it's showing you that we're at about 7.9% of our fund balance. Now, what I did find is that the when they're reporting this, because this is off of our annual budget, so if we actually look at this, because it's our unassigned balance divided by our expenditures, so if you actually take that divided by our actual expenditures for last year, it's actually 8.2%. So just a little bit different. Okay, so then the remaining slides just go through the remaining funds. So the next one is just going for debt service, showing that we paid down about a million dollars in debt service last year. Leaving us with a fund balance of about 454,000. And again, you're gonna see that building construction transfer of 733,000. Next one is food service. Again, you're gonna see the revenues, the expenditures, there was a change in the fund balance of about 179,000. And then the community services on there as well, leaving a change in the fund balance of about 29,000. So this trend is, this one, the cash investment trend analysis is always a fun one. So you'll see the, the debt service spikes when we went out for the referendum. So you got more money when we went out for that, and then as it got spent, as the construction project happened, it dips down eventually, zeros out. All the rest of our numbers, the building construction, the food service, and the community service. Actually, no, that was a building construction, I'm sorry, I missed hope. The debt service, the food service, and the community service have all been pretty steady, besides the building construction, but that's, that was it. Next, you have the district-wide assets, it's just showing you the breakdown of what current assets we have compared to the capital and non-current. And now this next one is the same thing with, just with liabilities. So you'll see the breakdowns between current liabilities, debt, non-current, net pension liability, and the net open liability. Um, I do want to note the green, the net pension liability. This is determined by the PERA and TRA actuaries. So that did take a increase, a significant increase. That's based on the actuary studies that are. And then the last one here is just showing long-term debt outstanding. So as you can see, our debt went up in 2020 with the project, and now it's been steadily on a little decline since then. And that was the audit report from the auditors. Any questions on the audit?
So in summary, we were about, about $400,000 better than we had anticipated. So even though when we deficit spent, we came out better than we had hoped.
Can I get a motion to approve the final audit?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns about the audit? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Fundraising report.
You guys got them in your packet, uh, gives you all the student activity account names and what their balances were as of 11/30/2023. Um, they also have, in your packet, you should have the CTC balance for the fund for the auditorium. And then you have all your fundraising goals and actual money raised for the people that are doing fundraising at this time.
I, do I have one for the CTC setting?
No, actually, I don't visit coffee, the CTC one.
I don't think we put that in there, we're about, we have about $33,000 remaining out of the 50. And that, down, the 17,000 that we spent is for some contracts we had, also some equipment that we bought in there, so.
Student activity count, and then we discussed that will be coming back up in the personnel day. Census report, the student support services, um, and the voluntary pre-K for '24, '25, which will be coming up later in the year.
Okay.
And that was it for budget.
Awesome. Any other questions for the Budget Committee? All right. What?
The goals, Ninja Anywhere.
I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Ninja Anywhere?
Ninja Anywhere?
Yeah, the elementary, elementary, homeschooling with me in 2024.
Oh, yeah, that's what they were raising money for.
I'm looking at Particuline, but that's all the deals.
Yeah, what are they going to?
That's a.
It's, the Ninja Anywhere is a family event, they kind of bring, kind of like, think high ropes, low ropes. They actually bring that, like a horse, set up in semi-trailers, and they bring it for kids to to actively.
Cool.
That'd be cool.
Yep.
Well, I hope they raise enough money.
All right, next is personnel. We met on November 28th, and we talked about a student support service funding plan, which is a state-funded plan. They give us the money for a counselor or a social worker. We have decided that because a social worker also kind of helps with counseling, that for our purposes, a .5 social worker would. that for our purposes, a point five social worker would be the best option for our community. So I would make a motion that we make an addition of a point five social worker.
Oh, second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? You know, the budget, it went to the budget after it went to personnel, and sounds like you guys thought it was okay too. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, then we have a discussion about voluntary pre-K for twenty twenty five. Would you like to explain what voluntary pre-K is, Mr. Malbert?
Sure.
Versus what we're doing?
So, so I also shared that with the budget committee today, so basically the legislature gave more money to the voluntary pre-K program that came through the legislation last year. We've never applied for it before because we never thought we would ever get the money, because it goes to the highest needed districts with low-income families. But with the district getting more, with the, with the state kicking in more money for that program, we believe that we may have a shot to get some of those dollars. So currently, what we have is, we have, we have four rooms in the, um, in the early childhood center. And what we have in there currently is, we have two, let me grab my notes here, we have two rooms that are school readiness rooms. And people, we have about roughly fifteen to, you know, well, I said it's about nineteen kids in there, but some of our special ed students that are on IPs. But the families that are in that pay a fee of twenty one hundred dollars, and they go every other day, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, every other Friday. So families pay for that. We currently have, um, a, a budget in those two rooms that operates at about a hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. And the money that we get for that is through the fees that we charge families and some pathway scholarship dollars that we get from the state. Then we have two rooms that are little huskies, the ones that, um, two to three-year-olds and then four-year-olds. And a lot of the four-year-olds are the ones that go to the little, to the early childhood on the opposite days, that we don't have school readiness, they go to the little husky's room. So we have those four rooms. So basically, what we're going to do is, we're going to apply for voluntary pre-K dollars, which would, uh, the two rooms would, really, the, it really stays the same in the two rooms, because currently what we do meets the needs of voluntary pre-K. But what changes in there is we would get more revenue from the state to run that program because it's based off ADMs. Families wouldn't have to pay the twenty one hundred dollar fee, so there's an advantage of that, it would be free for the families. We would still have the two rooms, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, every other Friday. But the other thing is that instead of a hundred ninety seven thousand dollars in revenue, we would get about two hundred eighty thousand dollars in revenue. So we'd get more dollars, and the families don't have to pay, so it's a win-win if we can get the application and get it, accept it. So the other good thing would be about that is that extra ninety thousand dollars that we would generate in revenue, we can use some of those dollars to help fund for an early childhood special education point five teacher. That would be in the other three-year-old room, that we would kind of change the programming for those three-year-olds. Um, and then we would have one little husky's four-year-old room. So it would meet the needs of families by reducing their fees. The number of kids is about the same, serving the same number of students, but we generate more, more dollars. And then we could use some of those dollars to help purchase a point five ECSE teacher for that one room with three-year-olds. And that would better serve the needs of those three-year-olds on special IPs. So it's really a win-win, um, uh, and for the families and for us as a district. So we're going to, through the personnel committee, we asked for permission to apply, and shared that with the budget committee as well, and it's really a win-win for us. So really what changes is the name.
Yep.
And the programming for three-year-olds.
Because I, that's what I asked.
But it also, but it also changes little huskies.
Yes, we did discuss that for a while, it changes, it does reduce their space.
Yeah.
Which could be a struggle for families to find another spot, if they don't reopen somewhere else, find someplace to.
Through the application process, does it have to stay every other day?
It's so many hours, you have to service so many hours, and we currently do that. We meet all the requirements for the voluntary pre-K.
Before any other questions, I'm going to make.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second, now you can question away.
have schooling more than just Monday, Wednesday, opposite Fridays, they could go Monday through Friday.
But that would cut down the amount of kids we could serve, because we serve different.
We would lose more kids.
And so, but.
And we wouldn't generate, wasn't there some financial thing with that too?
Because they go, they pay for the daycare.
Well, because we would use all the seats, we would not generate all of the VPK dollars. We would, we would lose money.
Gotcha, okay, and so that.
It's a financial thing, not, we couldn't, we looked at it, we couldn't, it didn't make sense.
But that's why the little husky program is for, one of the things that it says on the.
The four-year-old room?
The four-year-old room is for the kids that are opposite days.
So they have somewhere to go, they just don't. That mean little huskies, that would not.
Right, we still have one room with little huskies that they could go on the opposite days, which would be still somewhat fee-based, but it might be.
The opposite day.
And then, but then we'd be able to hire another house staff to help with this one.
With the special needs, which those.
Help alleviate some of the poor teachers.
Some of those issues. Yeah.
Any other questions about voluntary pre-K?
Budget's on board.
Budget's on board.
Can we start the application or not?
Uh, it's January fifteenth, I think.
Okay.
Soon as I bet we all say.
Yeah, we'll all talk.
It comes out January fifteenth, and then we'll talk.
Okay, so, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we're going to move from school readiness to voluntary pre-K if we win the application, right? All right, then we discussed a review of our kindergarten lottery process, which is in policy. Um, we are starting that review, and I believe policies that it will be, basically, we already have a policy for that.
We just haven't had to do the kindergarten lottery in the past.
Yeah, we haven't had to do it, but with the numbers coming up.
But we had to spear having to do that with the number of kids that we have.
It will be something that's coming up, so my recommendation, apply as soon as you can.
January fifteenth.
Sign, sign your, sign your kid up if you want him in kindergarten.
By January fifteenth, or move into school.
Or move into the school district, yes.
So, so. So by January fifteenth, in district and out of district?
Well, there's a couple different, there'll be a couple different lotteries.
So it's January fifteenth?
That's the first deadline for not, on open enrolled, or open enrolled students. We're sending them the letter, they return it back by January fifteenth, they would become the first lottery then.
Because in district, kids do not need.
Yeah. Right, so we, and there's, based off of policy, siblings, if you have a sibling in, you would be in the first lottery. And if you have, if it's a staff member and that's a state statute, they get included. So then we have to look at, once we get that first lottery done, then we have to look and see how many spots do we have, how many district presidents do we have? Then they would go to a second lottery.
Which is a first come, first served.
First come, first served, and.
Half of the students and staff.
Right. Yep, and we would just follow that policy, which we've never really had to do before, because we're always in that eighty to ninety range, but with the number of kids we have currently that supposedly are coming, we're over a hundred and ten, a hundred thirteen.
Which our number is.
So that doesn't mean, that's, doesn't mean they're all coming, but currently, usually we're at the ninety number. You know, so.
It, it's a good problem to have, they don't make money. Any other questions on the kindergarten lottery? Then we discussed the youth sports coordinator plan for twenty twenty four, twenty five, which is an action item. So I would make a motion for the youth sports coordinator schedule C addition for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Would you like to second that?
I'll second.
That will be, uh, program, would you like to explain what exactly?
Sure, we're going to have, uh.
Got a volunteer that says, I guess.
Yeah, with the expect, the expanding of the youth sports and kind of the, the demand of the job, uh, we were going to kind of change it up from just one youth sports coordinator to having, uh, three, a seasonal, a fall, a winter, a spring. That kind of helps, uh, relieving all the issues from just one person having to do with it. So we'll split it up into three, it's about a, uh, I think it's roughly about a four to five thousand dollar addition to the budget. So, and the, the community ed director would hire those three youth sports coordinators to oversee those seasons.
And the fall one would oversee football, volleyball and cross-country. The winter one would do basketball, boys and girls, and wrestling, and the spring one, spring, summer, would do baseball and softball.
Yeah.
Which is why they're split up with different percentages going to each one, because there's seasons and load are different.
Yeah, correct.
And is there an application open for those right now?
We haven't posted it yet, but we will, and that's not for, until next year, so it's not in this year's budget. And keep in mind that we may have other schedule Cs, things come up, because this is the year that people can say, we want to, you know, we want to add this, or we want to add that, we can do that every two years. So personnel committee or activity committee, there may be some other additions, but this one kind of came from me and the need, so we may have other.
Would it start in fall?
It would start next fall, not this spring, still under the current format.
And then who will do summer, like the T-ball and?
It'll still be the same.
That'll be.
For this summer, it'd be community ed, this would be Mr. Clark.
Next summer, is it go with the spring person?
It would be somebody else, it'd be three different people.
The spring, summer person, that's the same.
Yep, it's listed as spring, summer person.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because then that goes like farther.
Into June, July.
Summer, yeah.
Right.
Halfway through July.
That's, yeah, and that's, they get the largest percent of that.
Do they, uh, you said community ed person hires them?
Correct.
Not.
Community ed director would hire the youth sports coordinators, because it's under the community ed.
He's our community ed director.
Oh, far.
Oh, he's the community ed director.
Correct. And the youth sports crew, he does both.
And he's still going to be community ed director?
Correct, well, at this point, yes. Yes, he quit. Yeah, but at this point, he's still, and he would hire those three people. And the community ed director would still work with the budget, still work with scheduling, oversee registration, things like that.
And that was the audit report from the auditors. Any questions on the audit?
So in summary, we were about, about four hundred thousand dollars better than we had anticipated. So even though when we deficit spent, we came out better than we had hoped.
Can I get a motion to approve the final audit?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions, comments or concerns about the audit? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Then we discussed, uh, the overload classes that's needed for high school second semester, which they're asking for, uh, I believe it's Mr. Uselman to take over seventh grade construction grades class.
I have an update on that, actually.
Popular, okay, perfect.
Uh, Mr. Uselman declined that.
Right.
But we do have, Jenny Wise is going to take an overload, and it'll be a food service, some kind of food-related class, so we are still going to do it, but it won't be with Mr..
Okay.
So.
Perfect. Which will alleviate, because some of the classes had pretty high.
Right, so it's a high need in seventh hour, we had some class that had thirty-some kids in it, and kids were taking classes that they didn't really want.
Then we discussed the, uh, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six calendar options, which, uh, were given, we were given two options, and they have went to the teachers' union, but we have not heard back yet.
No, they, they did with a slight change, I had a couple of days wrong in there, imagine that, so I, we caught that, but the, and I actually added a third option, which, because of the change in the, threw a little bit of a wrinkle into it, so they'll actually have a third option that they can look at too. Not much difference, other than just getting out a little earlier, less days off in the school year. So they'll have three options that the staff will kind of look at, and then when they make a vote, I'll bring that back to you guys, hopefully by next month.
Which we kind of looked at, one with less, getting out earlier.
Right.
But it made a really long January trip, we were in March and April with not one vacation date at all, it was like, I think I'd rather have four days there and go four days in.
And I'll get that to you once they have a, what the staff likes. Not a whole lot of difference, one has a longer Christmas break.
Yeah.
And remember, this is for two years away. It's not for next year, it's for two years away, because we have to do every two years.
And everybody will be able to feel on next year, because there's two weeks of Christmas.
Yes. Then we discussed the national schoolwork conference, and kind of, I think the way we left it was that we weren't going to go to the state ones. We should probably all attend that one together before we go national, and it's too close to this year's to do that, so it would be the following year.
So we should look at the dates for next year, if that's something that the board would like to do, and, and the national conferences are really good. Probably don't have to go every year, but you know, maybe as a group, you want to go at one point somewhere down the road. But like we talked about, it's probably good to go to our state one, we have went in the past, but that's not always easy for everybody either, so we need to get that on your calendars for next January, if that's something that we want to do as a group, and then maybe look at a national one too at some point, but yeah.
Which would be difficult depending on who is rerunning next year and such.
Yep.
Because not all of us can do this.
Correct. Yeah, so, but we, it's usually the, was it the second week in January?
Yeah, it's very early in January, which is a miserable time.
It's usually when you have it.
Which is a miserable time, happens in Minnesota.
January eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah, and that's Martin Luther King weekend. I mean, it goes right before, it's usually Friday.
Right, it's before.
Yeah.
Yeah. But if that's something that you want to do, we should probably talk about it sometime next, early fall.
Yeah, September.
And get it on your calendars.
Or even earlier.
Yeah, or if you have trouble with work or days, you might want to, you know, think about saving a couple of days if you want to do that or not. Doesn't mean you have to, but maybe at least three or four of you go.
Yeah.
And it was a good, uh, experience for all of us together to go, be able to do, because we, we went once before.
Do you allow the alcohol?
Twenty-five?
Yes. Oh, twenty-five.
And if any of us, I mean, I can probably enable things to go this year too, so if anybody wants to go this year, I know it's harder for some people to get time off, but.
What was it?
It might be an option.
This year, it's January eleventh and twelfth.
I don't think it's too late to sign up.
I.
No, we're trying to buy a hotel room down there.
Yeah.
Might be a little.
Yeah, might be a one-day comeback thing, and only go for the one day or something, if we. All right, then we discussed staff appreciation ideas, and then we closed, but you can update them on the staff appreciation.
Yeah, um, we have a concert coming up on January sixth, uh, with acoustic gentlemen, that, they're really good, and I brought up, the personnel committee kind of got an idea from Bell Bank, um, um, that does a staff appreciation for their employees. So what I brought up was inviting all of our staff to that concert, giving, having two tickets for each member, that would include our bus drivers, Penn Mac employees, food service, and kind of allow them to come to that concert as a, kind of a staff appreciation thing, so. Thought it would be a great idea, and, and we'll have room for the tickets anyway, because we won't sell all of it, so.
So they don't fit?
What's that?
If they all got two tickets, plus selling to the public, would everybody fit?
Yeah. We have about a hundred sixty employees, so, and then I also would, in, in, I would also invite CTC employees as well as a staff appreciation and for the donation that they've done for that facility.
And it need buying enough people to fill its spots.
Yeah, we uh initially an interim committee together, we have uh three different families, four different families, sorry, that have volunteered to be on it, so.
Okay, good. It's last year or last time we had to have it. I remember having difficulty finding the appropriate.
It's still a small group, so it's hard to to pull together. We don't have as many to pull from, so. Um the second one I have on there is the career cohort, just to give you an update with that. As part of the high school, we have, we are part of a career cohort, Miss Sorswell, that is looking at our career programming, our pathways programming. Um and so we meet four times a year. And our committee met and some of the work that we have been working on is we've had through Minnesota SEPT, the career pathways that we developed prior to me being here. Um and looking at that, examining those pieces, looking at D data, looking at what is economically driving the need for those types of pathways, student interest and those pieces. And so we're looking at kind of updates to that as we go. We've kind of brought it down to four career clusters. Um and you can see that we kind of, these are just draft. But business, hospitality, food management, it's a huge piece in our area. It's a no-brainer. Uh health, human services, and natural resources. So really the kind of public sector, that health and human services sector, working with people. Uh and then the third one, they're construction, engineering, manufacturing, kind of that cluster together. And then the fourth one being the arts and communication. So really looking at uh we struggled with this one a lot as well, because it's a little bit more of a global cluster. When you think of where kids will need to go for careers in that, but also that it really marries with all of the other clusters, right? When you're talking about the arts, you're talking about video uh production, you're talking about music, all of this. They fall into so many other career areas too.
Yeah, well, Chris, when I read that, I was curious why we, why that was one of the four instead of like we're in a teacher shortage. Why isn't there a teaching?
Right, which human services actually would would fall under as well, yeah.
Exactly, the policies out, okay.
So and we have a introduction to education uh class. It's uh some recruitment that needs to happen to get more into that field as well. And then today we just had, uh we have a CNA program starting out through a youth skills grant. And so we had students from four different school districts, including ourselves, here uh getting fingerprinted to do their introductions and stuff. So pretty exciting.
Fabulous.
Um and then the third one on there is prolific. Um that's our data management. I've talked about it a couple of different times, but just to give you a little progress with that. We are entering this a second phase, which is to the MTSS process, the intervention and documenting that intervention process in the data management system. So that we are uh having fidelity, uh we are being consistent on the intervention and the measurements that we're using for that. And so this reaches to in the classroom, to our child study process, to our interventionist, their work. So it's really exciting. We are building the intervention bank within the system. So teachers, when they have a student in the classroom that they maybe are not needing a grade level or even with a component of reading, for example, they will have the ability to go to that intervention bank, search by the need and look for interventions that can be done in the classroom. And then it'll also show interventions that are the next tier and then the third tier, which would be our most intensive, so. Um and then the last piece of that, um again, that data management, getting our teachers into the system, our middle school science teachers. Um one of the things that we've discussed for a couple of years at the district leadership team is that we just don't have a lot of data. Uh we have the MCA test for science. It only happens in fifth and eighth grade. It's not a really consistent data source. Um so they are uh inputting data into the system around the engineering skills that the Minnesota science students have. And so they are tracking that five, six, seven degrees um and looking for that trend of our our kids coming away with those skills, so. It's exciting. They kind of grabbed, they grabbed a hold of that right away as a place for them to input that.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else from curriculum? Nope. All right. Policy.
This is the third reading of MSB policy number nine oh two, building use of policy that you can find in your packets. If you do confirm motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? I'll be honest, I'm not sure of all of it yet, still.
Well, we can always try it.
And that's that's where I'm going with it right now.
And then we come back as a board and say, you know what, the policy, I did hear that Brainerd actually kind of made theirs even.
Less stringent.
Little less stringent, yeah.
Oh, less stringent?
Right, because of the JCs. Uh they wanted the JCs to use the facility and they weren't a five oh one C, I think they were.
The JCs are a five oh one C.
Right, so they changed it to allow the the JCs to have the function there. So it must, you know, be going okay for them, I guess. We always go ahead.
Uh any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Um in closing, your packet, this is the second reading of the following policies that we have updated. Uh policy number four thirteen, harassment violence. Number sixteen, drug and alcohol testing. Number five oh six, discipline. Number five oh seven, overall punishment. Number five fifteen, protection privacy of student records. Number six oh six point five, library materials. And number six twenty, credit for learning. And that is all I have.
I did not have any feedback on any of those yet.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anything else from policy? Okay, activities?
We did not meet.
All right, but winter sports are in progress and going quickly, I'm sure.
So I just saw on the website too that there's community walking from four to eight during school days. I saw that. And then there's an adult power conditioning class. That's in January.
January, yep.
So people need to just keep an eye on the community education side of things.
Facilities.
We did not meet. We will probably need to meet here soon on the uh next stages of any LTFM projects.
Okay.
At some point, we'll have to meet on that.
Uh moving on to other, the MDE zero four projected enrollment.
We already covered that today. We did that in your.
Did you all see the numbers, package to that? It's beautiful.
Yeah, zero before. That was a kindergarten lottery thing.
Do you want that printed out? Beautiful numbers. By beautiful, I mean like predicting ninety five kid like um hundred and thirteen or some of the numbers. I mean, it's it's beautiful numbers. If we want, grow and grow and grow. All right, superintendent's report.
Man, chair, members of the board, uh not a whole lot of things here, but uh we do have elementary holiday concerts coming up uh Thursday and Friday of this week. Kindergarten and first grade are on Thursday the fourteenth and second grade on Friday the fifteenth. We have choir concert tonight, band concert next Tuesday. And then we have the Fournshell Classic Basketball Tournament, which will be here Thursday and Friday, the twenty first and twenty second. Remember that the board meeting is on Monday, January twenty sixth, and that would also be our uh did I say twenty sixth or twenty ninth? I meant twenty ninth.
I feel like it's twenty ninth, right?
I think it's twenty ninth. I wrote the wrong number.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. I wrote upside down nine. So that is also our restructuring meeting as well, so we have to pass some thoughts there. Um last month, Brian had asked for the strategic plan update of different items under each category, so we met administratively and we've done that. So each listed under each one is a list of the items that we have have done through this last three or four years of the strategic plan. And then some of them are self-explanatory, so you'll see on the very bottom of the first page where it says completed. That was just kind of something that was a list. It wasn't, that was it. There wasn't anything underneath those things. So we went through each one of those and each item that we went through and listed under each with a bullet point under those, so. So we have that completed for you, Mr. Grimsley and board members. Um last thing I have is last night, we had the tribute to John Denver concert. We had about a hundred fifty community members there. Had great feedback from the people that were there. Only thing it was probably would have been better is to maybe have that in the like a matinee afternoon show. Probably would have drawn a little better. We had quite a few elderly people that maybe didn't wanna drive at night, and so we might whether reconsider that one in the future. But they loved it, had a lot of great feedback on the website today from some of the people that have been there for the first time, loved the facility, loved the event, so. So that was nice. We had a hundred fifty people there last night. Then we have some more coming up here in the future, so that's all I got.
Any questions for Mr. Mulburn? Any individual board report? All right, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Point three wants to get it, she can make out whichever she wants. Any questions, comments, or concerns? That's all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Did you guys throw out anything for any community meetings?
I need a.
No, I need.
I do, please.
Okay, personnel and.